I'm here.
Councilwoman Gray.
Here.
Councilwoman Gray.
Here.
Councilwoman Knappel.
Here.
Councilwoman Petty.
Here.
City, uh, Councilwoman Moore.
Here.
City Attorney Griffin.
First item is the approval of minutes. Have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Consideration of non-emergency invoices over ten thousand. This council approval report provided for analysis. Scott, is there anything you want to add to that?
If somebody has any questions about any of it.
Is that what this is?
What do you need us to do on it? Is it something we need to approve? Or is it just letting us know?
Letting you know and let everybody, if you've got any questions about it.
Okay. So if anybody has any questions.
I do, uh, Parman Tractor and Equipment. That's something like ninety-eight thousand dollars. And I think if I read this correctly, it's for a snowplow, snow blade.
Can I speak to that?
Alright.
Yeah, uh, that is actually for a skid steer. It's a skid steer with, uh, does have some attachments to go with it.
Covering with those attachments.
One of them is a snowplow, uh, we've got a, uh, a bucket, and we also got a, uh, rock cutter to be able to cut through asphalt. Stuff like that.
Does it go on an existing vehicle?
All that attaches to the skid steer, which is all in that ninety-eight thousand.
Okay.
Good day.
Anybody else? We will move on then. Uh, I do want to say for the record, uh, Councilman Petty, you were correct. According to Attorney Griffin, I am presiding in this meeting as mayor, and I can only vote as a tiebreaker. Which we shouldn't have, because there's five people.
I don't see that.
I don't see that. That's my math. I don't, I don't get a vote in that. So, we'll move on from there, uh, to citizens' concerns.
Thank you. Uh, I really didn't get to finish last month because I only get two minutes, and it goes fast. But I've been reading tips for promoting, uh, being civil in public meetings, and it helped, was helpful to me, and I hope it would be helpful to you all. I've been reading just a couple of things. Being civil involves a display of respect for those who have positions with which one disagrees. We're all going to disagree, we got that. So our key would be to focus on the strengths and weaknesses of proposed solutions to community problems, not to engage in personal attacks against those who favor different solutions. It's okay, we have different. Uh, an even more powerful leadership strategy is to listen for the concerns and values that underlie people's diverse opinions, and to try to identify points that we can agree and find common ground, and I love those words, "common ground." Um, a goal is to create a culture of tolerance for differing points of view that credits everyone, with we all have the best interest of the community in mind, even if we differ. A strategy that, uh, we want a strategy that relies, not that relies on drowning other perspectives out, that just usually results in a turning up of the volume, and corresponding decreases in civility and discussions, and we really don't get as much done that way. The important thing is that we're not aggressively listening so that we can make our point, but that we are actively listening to the other person's viewpoint, and be looking for ways that we can compromise. Uh, one person should talk at a time, any private conversations should be taken outside or deferred, and all of this is not only for the council members, but it's for everyone in the room. And then I think I have one more point. Uh, we want to set people, separate people from the problem. Personal attacks or questioning people's motives or character rarely moves the conversation forward to a solution, and I know we're all looking for a solution, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Does anybody else want two minutes?
Yeah. Do I have to get up? I have had numerous conversations about how the private systems do not, it's almost like we're putting a gag order on them. We need it for them to get a chance, two minutes to come, and they don't need to have to put in something two or three days in advance. I mean, granted, thirty minutes before the meeting or something like that, I think we should allow, go back to allowing that happen. And that's all I got.
I've had several calls on that also.
We did, uh, we passed that resolution to make that happen. I think we'd have to get ahold of Attorney Griffin if we, if somebody wanted to make the motion to abolish that or whatever that looked. I think we need to talk to him about the process, if that's something we want to discuss about possibly doing. That would be somebody making the motion other than me.
And you guys would have to be specific on what you want, because he's gonna, he would have to draft it to run. Time limits or?
Could we think on that?
Sure. I mean, that's not my call, I'm just saying.
Yeah. My thought would be, consider that, think on it, and bring that up and put it on the agenda at the next meeting.
That's not my call.
If that's what you want to do.
Yes. Go ahead and make the motion.
Just make a motion to put it on the agenda for the next month. For the next.
Oh, I don't ask it. I would just let you know that he would have to know specifics.
We think we have to have a motion to do that? I don't think we have to have a motion for an agenda item.
Uh, to, to, to discuss it, it would have to be an agenda item, unless we added it to while we're sitting here.
I would just ask that it be added to the agenda.
Just discussion of it. Is there a second?
Not, not today.
Right, right, I'll second. It's a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Are you motioning that to add it to the agenda? Okay.
For August. Motion a second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Alright. Anybody else? Alright. We will move on to the mayor's report. I'll update on the, uh, the courts, uh, Spring Street, as well as, um, the Carthage Park. They have, uh, should be finished next week, sometime next week. They're supposed to be getting fencing, um, delivered this week, and possibly getting that done this week or next week, probably next week.
Looking good.
It does look really good. We've got update on quote of demolition, uh, we don't have that. The meeting with the design group, Upland Design Group, was rescheduled for July twelfth, which is this Friday. So that was rescheduled from the tenth yesterday to the twelfth tomorrow. Quote on the electrical update, we also don't have.
Evan should be getting that to me soon. He, he was reaching back out to the electrician.
Other than that, um, any department committee reports?
It's pretty rough. Don't know if I'd use that or not.
Really?
I would call your attention to the, uh, to my financial report. Just want to go over the cash balances for UN citizens. General fund cash, five million, forty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars. Street gate, it's two hundred and one thousand, two hundred and two dollars. Water sewer fund cash is two million, four hundred and sixty thousand, five fifty-seven. Our debt for water sewer fund is one million, seven hundred and two thousand, five hundred and nine.
Which, can I stop, which pages are you on on this? Is this not what we have right here, Ron? Or it is?
Financial report, but not those.
It's not this highlighted one? This is the council approval report?
No, that's not it.
I don't think we have that. I'm following you, but I wanted to make sure.
In any case, on that, uh, as far as, uh, our cash ratio in general fund, we're still very solid. Did go down some this past month to pay almost all of the playground, not playground, but courts and so forth, so that one will come out. Water sewer fund, we had a slight decrease of cash, and then the debt service ratio, slight decrease there, but that's primarily because of payables. Update on the cashier interviews, we have conducted interviews that'll go through tomorrow. We'll have to have a recommendation to the council on August first. Just to let you know Cindy Glabber was, uh, has begun a governmental accounting training program. As you know, the state of Tennessee, Tennessee code annotated, all it requires is for a town to have a certified municipal finance officer, which she has already attained, but, uh, I know that she needs some more accounting, so better enroll in a certificate with the University of Georgia, when she completes that course, it'll be equivalent to the semester of governmental accounting that any undergraduate would get. With the training that I'll be there, with her, she'll be, it'll be as good as anybody could do for the town of Parkage, because she'll know the town of Parkage, she'll know the governmental accounting, she knows the law, so. Once again, I'm a hired hand. This is your decision, I've laid up a plan, it's up to you guys to decide from that. As far as the ERP pro 10, the software implementation, we started this week, and it's been a long week. But we're up and rolling, and we're going to continue to march, and we're pleased thus far. Payroll and human resources implementation will be in the month of September, and utility billing and property tax implementation will start in October. So, uh, that's kind of where we are on that. I am cognizant of the fact that, you can give those, please, that you have received some information, um, that you need to supplement it. I mentioned to you about the purchasing policy last month. I didn't ask for anything, thank you, I was presenting information. And I'm presenting some more information, uh, so that you have the new law, uh, that concerned citizens wasn't aware of. So if you, you have that, we're not asking for anything tonight on that, we're going to, you know, not ready to present it yet, but I'm giving you all the information that I best can. Okay, that's all I have.
Are there any other department committee reports? Send those from everybody else. Alright, we'll move on to unfinished business, if we don't have any, that would move us to new business. I've been asked by, by Ms. Sally Woodard if we could move, uh, number three up to number one, and she has a pool party that's going on right now, and, uh, would like to get her back over there if anybody would like to make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Alright. Number three is, uh, pool manager, Ms. Sally Woodard, has requested a one-step pay increase, two-point-five percent for five employees that have been certified lifeguards for five years at our pool, and their names are listed below, I'm not going to say those on camera, but they're on there for all of us to see.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion a second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Alright. Thank you, Ms. Sally.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm out of here.
So we'll move to number one, that's moved to number two, TDEC, uh, resolution CR dash two zero two four oh seven one one concerning SRF loan and sewer lines, and turn that over to?
Sure.
Mr. Scotty Zell.
A couple of weeks ago, um, first let me say, everybody's aware that we've applied for state revolving fund loans, or clean water, which is sewer lines, and we've applied for, uh, drinking water, state revolving fund loan, uh, that's water lines, okay? So the clean water is the first one that's come through the pipeline, and it got to what's called a financial sufficiency review, and the letter I sent to you way back, okay? You have a copy of it tonight, okay? Is attached to that resolution. But basically, whenever you apply for a SRF loan, they, it's not an automatic thing. Number one, they have to have the money to award it, and number two, they do what's called a financial sufficiency review. And so in their review, uh, they came back and said, hey, you, if you want to do the clean water SRF loan, you will need to certify or attest that you will raise your rates at least one-point-nine-five percent, uh, to borrow that two-point-seven million dollars.
We're big at one-point-nine percent.
One-point-nine-five, but I finished you, okay? You all know I'm recommending next year, four to five percent every year, okay? If, now, if we had, they're saying one-point-nine-five percent just for the clean water loan, okay? We don't have to take the loan. And it's basically, they make a recommendation, uh, but it's basically a recommendation that says, if you want the money, you'll, you'll certify that you will do this, okay? But we're planning to do that anyway. So I contacted them and indicated, well, I know there's going to be a drinking water SRF loan application to come into financial sufficiency, uh, can we just put all that together? And I also sent to them a regulatory profit loss that you have a copy of, to say, you need to consider this, because based on our thirty-three percent increase last year, we're in a better position, uh, now. Also, talked to them about, um, what we're doing as far as the fire suppression, adding that to our, uh, bills, because we've got like twenty-three businesses, uh, who are not being metered for their fire suppression systems, and there's going to be additional revenues for that. So I asked them, you need to put this into your equation, please, and they're very helpful, they want to help us, okay? So, uh, they've done that, and then I went to Andre and asked him to draft up a resolution. And the resolution says, that's our intention, it's not a law just yet, okay? But basically what will happen is, we have to say to TDEC, if we want to get the clean water loan, the drinking water loan, we have to say to them, yes, we understand that we need to continue to raise the rates if we're going to get these loans. So I asked Andre to draft up, uh, that resolution, which you have before you. And it basically says, and I sent this to the TDEC, and I said, would this be sufficient, uh, for us to go ahead and get approved for the clean water SRF loan? The indication was yes, and that they will, okay? And they're going to send us another official letter. Basically that resolution says, we recognize as a town of Parkage that if we're going to borrow, uh, two-point-seven million dollars for clean water, state revolving fund loan, which will get twenty percent forgiveness, we'll need to increase our, uh, water and sewer rates. If we're going to get the drinking water SRF loan, we will need to increase our drinking, our water and sewer rates. Now, I just want you to imagine what this would look, have looked like, had we not made the increase. I'll give you another indication, just as much information as I can. Today, we had the bid opening for, uh, phase one of water sewer main replacement, and I don't remember how many square feet it was, Derek, but it's going to come for Smitherman, Hillcrest.
Hillcrest.
Hillcrest. Walton and.
Hard, Carmet. Hard, Carmet.
Is going to be one-point-six million dollars. That's all.
It's just water.
Yeah, that's just the water lines. Well, we're planning on funding six-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand of that with the state water infrastructure grant, which we have, uh, and they're just waiting on us to get rolling, okay? So that'll still leave us with a chunk of change to, to spend out of our money, okay? Just to get those done. So my point being, um, this is going to be an increasingly expensive endeavor. So, we, that was the winning bid amount. The losing bid was two-point-four million dollars to just do those, okay? So it's not going to get any cheaper. August first, Stephen Jones, our engineer, will be here, and, uh, he'll explain all that, and those bids will come before you, the winning bid will come before you for approval or disapproval. But, uh, we'll speak more to that. But, all TDEC wants is to know is that we recognize we've got to increase rates in order to move forward with putting in new water lines and new sewer lines. I'm just glad we took the step we did when we did. Be even worse, so.
Do we need a, uh, a motion to approve, um, that?
Would need a motion to approve that, and we'd have to be voted on altogether.
Okay.
And we.
I'd ask for any questions. Derek and I have worked together on this, so, any questions?
I got one. We raised it the other day to do this, and we didn't use all that money up. We agreed at the thirty?
Thirty-three percent just got us to the place where we weren't running a loss, okay?
So that's been done all these years, a little bit of time, it wouldn't have looked so bad.
That's right. And because of the political nature of you guys having to approve it, um, that's why it's difficult. Every municipality across the state has the same problem, because it's a political issue. People don't want the rates to increase, and the council doesn't want to do that, because it's not very fun. But the reality of it is, um, it's gotta, gotta happen, and if we want to replace fifty-year-old lines that we've got, you know, we've got to be willing to do that. Now Stephen Jones is going to speak to also our staff, Derek's staff, uh, doing more installation of those, which they're fully capable of. Every water leak that comes along, they're the ones who fix it, nobody else, they know how to do it. And we now have the equipment to do that, and so we've made plans, and we're not the only municipality that's placed in the same situation now, okay?
Well, let's, let's do this, I'm, I'm all for discussion, and we, we obviously need to have some, if we do it, but we need a motion before we start, uh, discussing. If anybody wants to make one.
I'll make a motion to discuss.
A motion to discuss, if you made, okay.
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Discussion?
Scott, where are we compared to last month's typical water rates? Are we, are we in there, is it, are we the only one that got this high?
Uh, I would say we, we linger behind those other municipalities.
Think we're less than that?
I can't tell you they're specific, but I don't have any doubt.
I can tell you that I sat in on a meeting with Marsha Blackburn the other day, and all the municipalities were there, and infrastructure's huge in a lot of different places. She said that she heard that in almost every county that she went to. Infrastructure's a problem, it's an expensive problem.
And the problem is, if we don't fix it, this time it's going to get more expensive.
Got to be fixed. Keep the Band-Aids on it, they don't.
You can't Band-Aid this, this is a.
Well, and Derek can speak to that, there's a lot of mandatory things that are going to happen in the near future that we have to fix.
There's a lot of lead and copper, uh, rules and stuff coming down. Right now, they're making us just get an inventory of, of everything, so, in the next ten years, they're probably going to make us replace it all. Of course, they're going to have to fund it somehow. There's a lot of stuff coming down the line.
We don't.
We have been approved for a land service inventory grant, but we'll be well done with the inventory before we get that.
And if we don't approve this, state's going to come in, correct?
No, that's not what this is.
Is that not correct?
If we don't approve this, this just says, we don't qualify for the clean water, state revolving fund loan, okay? That's why we did the thirty-three percent, was to keep the state from coming in and telling us, this is how much your rate.
So this has to do more with the loan itself?
It has everything to do with the loan itself, um, so.
We say yes and get the money, or we say no and we don't get the money?
Yes, that's correct.
And when would the increase take place? Do you have any idea on that?
Now, I'm recommending FY twenty-five, twenty-six, we do five to six percent, four and a half, four to six percent, but I recommend that happen every year. But in this case, all we would have to do, or is we're saying, we understand what your TDEC's recommendation is, and we will do at least what you've recommended by the time we have to start paying off the loan, okay? So the way that works, when you get SRF loan money, um, you know, you get the full amount of the loan, let's say it's a hundred dollars, you get the full amount, and if it's a twenty percent, uh, match, they'll take, they forgive twenty percent, so you only owe eighty bucks. And then when you begin to pay it off, that's when the construction project is complete, which we're anticipating two to three years, uh, to use up that money. Then you begin paying principal. So if you just borrowed ten dollars of the eighty that you get, you're going to pay interest on that until it's time, till the construction's completed, and then you will begin to pay the principal. Remember, those are amortized over a twenty-year period, so their goal is to help municipalities, but it's not a yield, it's still a loan, but.
Councilman Petty?
Is there a way to do a bond or a loan and do this without increasing the water rates? Because I've been hearing people just yelling, we've already had a big water increase, and that's a question for you, and for Derek, and for everybody.
Can I speak to whether rates would be raised at a five percent?
I'm good, I'll wait.
Okay. Um, so it, the minimum bill, if we raised it five percent, would only go up to two dollars and sixty-six cents. That's inside the city limits, that's including water and sewer. Outside of the city limits, they don't have sewer, it would only go up a dollar eighty-two. So on an average residential bill is five thousand gallons throughout the whole city, that's the average. It would only raise their bill five dollars and fifty-four cents inside the city limits, and three dollars and twelve cents outside the city limits. So we're not looking at what we were looking at with the thirty-three percent rate.
Thank you, Cindy. Without a rate increase, um, in my opinion, uh, if we planned on doing a gradual increase each and every year, we could stay up with doing, using the SRF money. As I've said multiple times before, once we get these loans that we have presently applied for, that's all we're going to be able to borrow, okay? That'll take us two to three years down the road on new water lines and new sewer lines. From that point, it'll be, Derek and his crew, what they can get done, okay? And then if there is, uh, grant money that comes, that is true grant money, okay? I mean, we don't have to match or come up with a certain amount, which is not likely, but the CDBG grant, Community Development Block Grant, we've applied for a million-dollar grant there, but it'll be another year and a half before we even hear anything about that. So to answer your question, I would say no, unless we just say we're not going to borrow any money, which means that task will go to Derek and his crew, and it's going to happen a lot slower.
But you're saying we can raise the water weight rate five-point-five or whatever percent, and still get this loan?
That's, uh, that's what I'm saying, yeah. We don't have to raise it now.
You could raise it one-point-nine-five.
But what we're going, we're telling the state, we understand we will have to adjust rates and increase them, and they're willing to take that resolution and say, okay, good faith effort, we'll go ahead and make the loan.
Scott, is that correct, though? Technically, we could raise, we could agree that we're going to raise it one-point-nine-five percent, and they would give us the loan.
Technically, you could say that, but you're going to do this again.
Sure.
As soon as the drinking water one comes in, so. My goal was, if we're going to do it four to five percent, we're anticipating it, why don't we go ahead and get it all taken care of now? All this is saying is, is our intentions to go between three and six percent.
Now what happens if we, uh, raise it to one-point-nine-five percent or whatever, and then next year, we have to raise it again, but we already got the loan, does that jeopardize the loan?
I don't think they're going to call that loan as long as we're making the payments on it. I don't, they're not going to call it. Their goal is to help us, okay? It's not to hurt us, but they have vested interest in making sure that every municipality is, in their opinion, to their standards, financially solid, because Tennessee bonds are traded on public markets, and they're very good bonds, because Tennessee has a very good standard AAA plus bond rating. Reason for that is because our comptroller, TDEC, they make sure that we're pulling the line, although it's not politically comfortable to do, it's required to do.
This sounds like some.
This sounds like something that would be beneficial definitely to the city and to the citizens. Timing is not good, because we all are paying 33% more on our bills and, but I don't know that there's anything else that we can do. I just think the timing is difficult for the citizens to understand.
Oh, I don't have any doubt of that. That's why I tried to work, saying, I'd like to get rid of this letter, okay? Because we're, I don't think, you're exactly right, but they're the banker. They get to play it as they see fit. But once again, I gave them the data so that they knew we were on top of what we've got. But just to understand, all the efforts has been done to get SRF loans at major dollar amounts. When it got to this point in time, we wouldn't have had, you know, a chance at all, because the financial sufficiency review would say, hey, you can't afford $27 million. Happened in quarantine, you can't afford it. Which we, some of us knew. But in any case, in this case, as long as I'm involved with this, I'm not going to let the town get in any problem, okay? And so when it gets into place, we've got the money available to us, I'll know when to stop, okay? I'm hoping we can use that full $7.5 million and we'll take the town as far as we can with existing. But either way it goes, I'm still, I am recommending every year, probably 4% to 5% increase.
And that'll be something that we look at at each budget.
At each budget.
It's not like that we're deciding on that tonight. But I would like, if we could get a motion to approve or not approve, and we'll still have discussion after that, but if we can have a motion on record so we can move forward.
And this is a motion to...
Approve sending that letter, saying that we're going to at least raise it according to the letter, 1.95.
Our resolution says...
3 to 6.
3, yeah.
Okay, so it'd be...
Because we got the drinking water coming through their pipeline and it's going to have the same thing. And it's more than the clean water one, it's 3.5, so that's why we're trying to give a range there.
And that does need to be said again?
Yes, I thought so. Over the next five years, it's in here, if anybody ever wants to see it, in the resolution.
So it's a motion to approve or not approve sending the letter as it's written?
Good explanation.
Resolution, excuse me, that...
Maybe it might be appropriate to read this resolution for the public to hear what's there, since this is such a sensitive topic.
Anybody want to volunteer for that?
I can't read, so I can't read.
I'll read, Larry.
I certainly can't read.
Whereas the Town of Carthage has applied for state revolving fund loans, CWPRL 2023-25, that's clean water, that's sewer lines, and DWPRL 2023-25, that's your water lines, for clean water and drinking water line rehabilitation. And whereas the Town of Carthage Water and Sewer Fund requires additional revenue to financially qualify for the above referenced SRF loans and loan forgiveness. And whereas the Town of Carthage desires to meet the financial requirements for SRF loans, CWPRL 2023-25 and DWPRL 2023-25. And whereas the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, TDEC, which administers the SRF funding for the above referenced projects, has or is expected to recommend a water and sewer rate increase of at least 3% and 6% over the next five years, over the construction period for the SRF loans, for the town to financially qualify for the SRF loans and associated loan forgiveness. Whereas the town will qualify for SRF loan forgiveness if the town formally acknowledges the TDEC recommendation for said water and sewer rate increases and expresses an intention to adopt said rate increases to meet the financial qualifications for the SRF loans. And whereas the Town of Carthage desires to formally acknowledge the TDEC recommendation for said water and sewer rate increases and expresses an intention to adopt said rate increases to meet the financial qualifications for the SRF loans. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and board of aldermen of the Town of Carthage. The Town of Carthage and Town Council hereby acknowledges and intends to adopt the TDEC recommendation for water and sewer rate increases of at least 3% and 6% over the next five years, over the construction period for SRF loans, CWPRL 2023-25 and DWPRL 2023-25, for the town to financially qualify for the SRF loans and associated loan forgiveness. Required rate increases will be implemented prior to the requirement to repay principal on SRF loans. The resolution shall become effective upon its passage of welfare of the town required.
Scott, is there any changes that need to be made at that last paragraph, that section one? The Town of Carthage and Town Council hereby acknowledges and intends to adopt the TDEC recommendation for water and sewer rate increases of at least 3% and 6% over the next five years? Is there some kind of wording that I'm misunderstanding?
I think the "and" needs to be changed to "to." It's a range.
It's 3% to 6%. Maybe up to 6%.
I was not reading that correctly.
So can we, if we make a motion to adopt this or to...
Change that "and" to...
With changing "and" to "up to," if somebody wants to make that motion.
I'm still, I'm not the cheapest tool in the shed, and I admit that. But we've talked about 3%. We've talked about 1.95%, and I don't know where we're coming from. So explain it. Somebody explain to me, okay?
Do something.
Either way.
Okay. TDEC processes the loan applications on their timeline and in their sequence. We've applied for the clean water and the drinking water. The clean water, the sewer lines, that application has reached the financial sufficiency stage at TDEC, okay? So that's why we got the letter. That's just for a $2.7 million loan, of which we'll give 20% forgiveness, okay? So that's why they generated the letter, for just the $2.7 million that we're looking to borrow, okay?
But it's just a loan, so we have to pay up the rest 80% back?
That's right. Over probably a 20-year amortization time, at a very, very low interest rate. So what their concern is, it's your present rate structure. If you borrow that much money, you can use it all, you would need to increase your rates by 1.95% whenever you started paying back that money, okay? So we'd have a construction time. Now, that's just the one. Well, I know that we've got a drinking water loan that hasn't reached this stage yet. And when that one reaches the same stage, it's 3.5 million. So it's going to be at least 1.95%. If I extrapolate it out, it's going to be probably between the range of 4% to 6%. So therefore, if we give a range, we can fall anywhere in that range. So it's going to at least be 4%. It'll be 5% to 6%. But in any case, that's why we're saying to them in this resolution, hey, we don't have to go through this again, wait another month in order to move on this, or two months. We're taking care of this now, so that when it comes time for the drinking water financial sufficiency review, they've already known the town's intentions, okay? And we'll take care of it, because we want to get those SRF loans. Does that make sense, man?
Yeah, it's pretty much it.
Your recommendation is what, again, the percentage?
My recommendation has been, for the last two years or more, that we need to increase water and sewer rates every year, because the cost of us doing business continues to increase all the time. So we didn't do it, then we had FY 22-23, we had a deficit, okay? One more year of deficit, then we don't get to drive our ship, the state will drive our ship. They will come in and they will say, here's what your rate increase is. I have certain stories of 70%, okay? The issue is, it needs to be a continued gradual increase. Part of our problem with last year and the increase was, at the same time, poor timing, our trash disposal contract expired, and it was renegotiated, and it went up $3 a month, in addition to our water and sewer rate increase, okay? So that was a hit. There are no other competitors for garbage pickup in our area.
But aren't those two different categories? Because water and sewer are on their own.
But to get on the same bill, to the citizen, it's the bottom line dollar of what it comes up to be, so. And I understand that. I pay water bills every month. So to me, in my opinion, we need to take the step of improving the water lines that we can afford while this is in place, because it takes a year or more to get the loan process through TDEC, okay? And they're even slower now, and they'll admit that. If the town is serious about improving the water and sewer lines, we need to start on it. The other option is to say, no, we'll just fix them all ourselves, and that's a viable option. Just understand, of the 18 miles of line, it's going to take a lot longer. And we won't be done in two to three years, but we will have taken it as far as we can go financially. We will have to recognize, we would never be able to afford to borrow enough money to do the town, all the town. But we are taking a systemic approach based on the inflow and infiltrations study. There are the worst sewer lines that are already cracked, and the sewage is running just in the channel where the pipe was at, okay? Those have been prioritized. Those are the streets that we're doing first, okay? As far as the sewer lines and the drinking water, once the ground is settled, then we're going to repave those. So that money comes out of the Street Aid Fund and the General Fund. We will never catch up, say it a different way, the Street Aid to pave the streets. We're never, we're not going to have a problem paving the number of streets that have water line and sewer line replacements, okay? Because it doesn't cost as much to pave the streets. And we have financial sufficiency to the General Fund and the Street Aid Fund. You've got to remember, the Street Aid Fund, we gain about $8,000 to $9,000 every month, okay? Just four streets, okay? That's all we can use it for. We've got 201,000 sitting in there now. That's how we paid for Main Street, okay? It's out of the Street Aid Fund. So the argument that, hey, you know, you're going to, we just won't be doing 27 miles or 18 miles of water and sewer line and then have to pave them, it's just not going to happen in our, say, our lifetime, Sam's going to do a long, long, long time, so. But I'm saying, within the next, you know, five, 10 years, we can't say, hey, we can't tolerate another rate increase, we're going to ride it like we are, and we're going to let Derek and his staff replace the lines as they can. But there'll be some that they won't have the technical equipment to do, okay? And as far as, you know, one argument's been made to say, well, we don't want them to do it. We've invested in the equipment for safety, and we've invested in the equipment for them to do the job, and they know how to do the job, okay? They're starting on a smaller street, which is Paul Avenue, and gaining some confidence with that, which is smart and wise. And as they go on, they'll go larger projects, but they know how to do it, and they do it every day whenever we have a water leak. They dig it up and they replace the water lines, okay? And it's all going to be engineered and approved before it's done anyway. So it just requires them to focus on, it takes longer.
So let's get to some kind of a motion. We still haven't made any motions, whether to send the letter or not to send the letter. What do we want to do?
I'll make a motion to send a letter.
To approve their resolution.
To approve the resolution. However, with the correction down here in the section one paragraph, change that word "and" to "to."
Up to.
Or up to, yes.
At least and an "up to."
And also be the fourth paragraph, whereas, if they decide the same thing.
Okay. You see that? What he's talking about.
The fourth paragraph, one, okay.
Yes, yes. See that?
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. It's part of a second. Any discussion? We've had a lot of it. You want more?
The 1.95% is the lowest you could go.
If we approve the resolution, we're saying the minimum is going to be 3.
Three, right, okay.
And that's because it's...
The two different things, there's the one for 9 and the other for 9.
Yes.
Need more discussion? Do a roll call vote on that one.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Knappel?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
I'm going to next thing.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
All right. We move on to number two on our packet, technically, the third thing, but we'll talk about new business. First reading of planning ordinance P-20240711, concerning the rezoning of, quote, "Point Dexter Property, First Avenue from C1 to C2." That's something that was presented to us on the planning commission last night. We've recommended sending it here to the council, after the council, it'll go to Board of Zoning and Appeals. It is, if you know where the old tobacco warehouse is, on Spring Street and First, it's above that, and it's that section on top of that hill back there, where he's wanting to, in C1, we don't allow for storage buildings, and C2, we do. So he's trying to get it moved, so he can have two storage buildings up there that he will either store stuff himself or allow other people to store there for a fee.
This is the lot right there, the structure, the...
No.
No, no. The old tobacco warehouse, the, across from the basketball court and back behind it.
It's kind of an obscure place.
Maybe it's a tractor warehouse.
Yeah, it used to be there.
I thought, tobacco warehouse, too.
The big warehouse there.
Yeah, okay.
So behind that, on the hill back behind it, the little gravel area back there.
Make a motion to base it.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? And there's just one more thing for somebody to make a motion on.
Yours?
Second. All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.